All right, thank you. Roll call, please. I'm sorry, our, this evening, our city clerk, who is our, filling in as acting city manager, so our assistant city clerk is going to be doing the honors of roll call and keeping track of things.
Am I on? Okay, good. I forgot last time. All right, Mayor Borbo.
Here.
Mayor Protem Deres.
Here.
Councilmember Funk.
Here.
Councilmember Newsom.
Here.
Councilmember Peak.
Here.
All present.
All right, thank you. Well, if you're attending in person or listening to the city council tonight on any of the avenues for doing so, welcome. We will proceed on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar consists of items considered routine and non-controversial by staff and will be acted upon on a single, or normally acted upon on a single motion by the city council unless otherwise requested by a council member for separate consideration. And public comment is allowed on consent calendar items will be invited prior to action. I will say upfront, though, that this evening we will be pulling item D4 for separate consideration, and we will proceed with items D1 through D3. So I will ask this time, are there any council member questions of staff on items D1 to D3? Okay, seeing none, we'll see if there's any public comment on items D1 to D3. Anybody? All right, seeing none, we'll return it back to council for a motion on those items.
Move approval of items D1, D2, and D3.
A second, all second. Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Funk, second by Mayor Protem Deres. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom.
Yes.
Councilmember Peak.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Deres.
Yes.
Mayor Borbo.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item number D4 is adoption of the 2025 fire hazard severity zone map. It is, this is the second reading. During the first reading, we were informed by the city attorney of potential conflict of interest on the part of three of us who own homes in a certain area of the city. And so, three of us, that is councilmember Peak, myself, councilmember Newsom, recused ourselves because that would have left a, not a majority or quorum for action. We drew straws and councilmember Newsom participated in that discussion. And so how that's going to work is, while I, for the record, don't agree that we have a potential conflict of interest, because the three, the three who voted on it last time needed to be the ones that vote on it this time, councilmember Peak and I will figuratively step away because it is such an administrative action here. And I'm going to hand the gavel over to Mayor Protem Deres to handle item D4, and we'll pretend councilmember Peak and I are not here.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. All right, so I'll begin by asking the remaining of us on the dais here to have any questions regarding before. No questions? Okay. And I think I should open this up to, to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak? And if you would, please step in line now so we're not waiting, and you'll have your three minutes. Thank you, go ahead.
Good evening, council. Once again, Jeff Osland, resident. I am in disagreement of the councilmembers that have had to recuse themselves from this. I actually believe it should be the two that are sitting up at the dais, councilmember Funk and councilmember Deres. And the reason I say this is, you're impacted down the line on the WISI map if they change it to a different color, and that's why I disagree. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osland. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for a motion. Or any further discussion?
I'll just, it continues to be the advice of our city attorney that the recusals have been done according to FPPC guidance, even if it doesn't make a lot of sense to us. Right?
It doesn't make a lot of sense to me either, but there is an opinion letter that I obtained on behalf of another agency where the FPPC was crystal clear that those types of conflicts do occur in connection with the fire severity maps. So out of an abundance of caution, that is the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Osland. So, motion.
I'll move approval of item D4.
I will second then. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Deres.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. And at this point, I will hand the gavel back to the mayor. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Deres. And I imagine the record will note the three to nothing and two recusal vote. Okay, so with that, we are going to move on to updates from the city manager. Mr. Lewis is out of town this week, and so his role will be played by our city clerk and assistant city manager, Laura Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Lot of exciting things coming up this week and in the very near future. Just as a reminder on the ECR project, for the next two weeks, electrical crosswalks and landscaping work will continue on the median of El Camino Real between Traffic Way and Rosario. Some roadway segments and crosswalks on El Camino Real between Traffic Way and Rosario will be intermittently closed during this active construction, but all other roadways will remain open. Messages, as always, messages and directional signage will be posted, flaggers will be at the intersections where needed to guide traffic, and there will be signage for temporary detour routes. Those are, you can kind of see them, they're sort of notated in blue. And then, as always, drivers are encouraged to pay close attention to the traffic signage and plan for traffic delays. What's even more exciting with the ECR project is that we are having the ribbon cutting and downtown block party this Friday, the section of El Camino Real from essentially Traffic Way south to 41. The majority of the work there is done. People are parking in the median, in the, in the middle parking now. Traffic is moving through. All of that heavy construction is now done. So everyone should mark their calendars for the ribbon cutting. That'll be at 5:00 PM in the Plaza area that's across from Sunken Gardens. And following that ribbon cutting, we'll go right into a downtown block party. The block party will include a disco ball scavenger hunt, live music from Traffic Records DJs. There will be interviews from What's Up North County, extended hours at local businesses, and they have some surprises in store. So please, please, please come out and check it out. Slow Safe Ride will be providing shuttle service to the downtown area from 4:00 PM until 8:00 PM. That's courtesy also of the T-Bid, so you can catch that at some of the hotels. Information on the shuttle and the celebration are on visitatascadaro.org/visitedascadaro.com, apologies, forward slash events, and click on the block party weekend shuttle for more information. This Saturday is the summer concert series that will be June 28th at 6:30 PM with the Rockin' V's Band. All concerts on all our Saturdays are, they're outdoors at the Tascara Lake Bandstand. They're free to attend. You get to enjoy the sounds and your neighbors listening to music during the concert series. The concerts is, concerts are from 6:30 to 8:30 PM, and we recommend bringing a low back chair, and snacks will be available for purchase. Also, super exciting is Monday kicks off the summer aquatics program that starts next week with lap swim and rec swim. Those lap swim and rec swim are both available Monday to Friday next week from noon. Lap swim is noon to 1:30, and rec swim will be from 2:00 to 3:40. Group swim lessons begin the week of July 7th, and that'll offer three different levels of swim with different, with two different time slots each day to choose from. The swim lessons run for one week each. They're 30-minute lessons each day. Passes for rec swim and lap swim need to be purchased in person at Colony Park Community Center, and registration for lessons are available online via the ActiveNet portal, and you can get to there by visiting atascadero.org. And just as an aside, the pool will be closed on 4th of July. As a reminder, speaking of 4th of July, as a reminder, fireworks are prohibited in Atascadero. Please, please, please practice 4th of July celebrations safely. And remember that even fireworks that are labeled safe and sane, those are not permitted in the city of Atascadero. And those who are found to be using those will be cited and fined. The City of Atascadero Fire and Emergency Services wishes the community a memorable 4th of July, and please asks for common sense, safe celebrations, and a fire-free holiday. Also, on 4th of July, we have a lot of 4th of July events happening. On 4th of July, there is a music festival that'll be hosted by the Atascadero Printery Foundation. That'll be at Atascadero Lake Park from 3:00 to 8:00 PM. Tickets are available online. The music festival features a dynamic lineup, including Hot Buttered Rum, Jordan Bush and the Packrats, the Doohickeys, and Bluegrass, New Grass, and Old Grass. Food, local wine, and craft beer will be available per purchase. Hot El Camino Cruise Night is right around the corner, and registration is now open for that. This is, this will be the 32nd annual Hot El Camino Cruise Night. That'll happen on Friday, August 15th, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM, and that kicks off cruising weekend. Obviously, it's Hot El Camino, so the cruise will take place along El Camino Real in Atascadero. For those wishing to register your car, it is $30 per vehicle. Passes are limited, and we do sell out. So if you are interested in participating and driving your car, please, please, please make sure you get that pass in advance. Pre-registration is located at the Colony Park Community Center during normal business hours, which is Monday to Friday from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Or registration by mail can be done as long as it's received by August 1st. Or in-person registration must be done by August 15th at 4:00 PM, and that obviously is based on availability of passes. And with that, council, I'm available to answer any questions. As always, please remember, if you have any questions on events or want more information, please visit visitatascadaro.com. And for all city-related business, please visit our website at atascadero.org. Thanks so much.
All right, let's see if any member of the council has questions, and we'll start on my left with the councilmember Peak.
Get a lot of questions about cruise night with the new median, the new parking in the middle. Can you, maybe the police, Public Works isn't here. Are we going to be able to keep the center lane open for safety turnarounds, or needed fire engines, or people going to be allowed to park there or sit there? Is there any idea on that yet? There's a lot of people ask that all the time.
So no, those are going to be, what's that? Oh. So we're going to have the, the middle lane, everything is going to be, that's all going to be closed down. We are going to have the routes situated so that there are pull-ups if people are overheating or anything of that nature for emergencies. We'll basically have to shut down, you know, depending on what the emergency is, where it's at, we'll have to probably shut down that section. Basically, we'll have to make that call at the time, but we're not going to allow for the U-turns through the, the new construction.
That parking will be, no parking the whole day, so we don't have to tow people?
Correct, no parking.
All day?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, Mayor Protem Deres.
The, if you could back it up a couple of slides, the Printery concerts, yeah, I was kind of looking at this, and I didn't hear where it's going to be. Oh, Tascadero Lake Park, I just wanted to make sure. I didn't see that on there. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Any questions on this side?
And just to follow up on the Hot El Camino Cruise Night, will the, the center median area be available so that people can bring their chairs and sit and watch?
No, we're going to have that shut down. We don't, we, because I don't want to have pedestrians walking back and forth with the, the vehicles that are cruising by, so we're going to have that shut down.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, if no further questions for the city manager updates, we will move on to community forum. And community forum is reserved for persons wanting to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. The Brown Act prohibits council from discussing matters not on the agenda, although the council at its discretion may ask staff to contact a speaker regarding an issue raised during community forum or ask a brief question of staff. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Please state your name for the record, and if you do wish to speak in community forum, please line up now. Okay, first speaker.
Good evening, Jeff Osland, resident, also here representing some of the businesses which I consult with and some residents here regarding the downtown. Most people think the downtown is great in what we've done, but we have problems with the intersections. And I'd like to point out two intersections that I have not discussed before, West Mall and East Mall. And I always confuse the two, but West Mall, I believe, is the one by the gas station. We have a no-left turn lane. Sorry, is that East Mall? Okay, East Mall. We have a no-left turn when you're heading northbound. So you cannot make a left legally and make a left again, and then make a right into the driveway to the gas station. Is that going to be corrected? That's the first question I have. The next one is, they did line the middle of that road, so you can go, it's separated. So that's a question. The next one is by La Plaza on West Mall, if a vehicle makes a left to get into La Plaza or to make a left to come back southbound, they are currently blocking all the traffic going northbound on El Camino. It may be cued for two vehicles, but if a vehicle has a trailer behind it or doesn't pull far enough up to go into, with say, La Plaza, or to make the left going southbound, you are blocking El Camino for a very long time. I think these are things that our city needs to take a look at sooner than later on that end of it. That would be what I have on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other speakers for community forum? Okay, if not, I'll ask, if you have a chance, Public Works representative, if you wouldn't mind getting together with Mr. Osland and addressing that issue. I, I too had some concern about not taking away an accessibility thing to the gas station, so. But anyway, if you could speak with him offline, that would be great. Okay, thank you. With that, we will move on to our public hearings. We will begin with item G1, adopting sewer service charges to be added to the 2526 property tax rules. I see Public Works analyst Ryan Betts getting up to present this item.
Thank you, Mayor, city council. As the mayor indicated, my name is Ryan Betts, Public Works analyst for the city of Atascadero. As we have the PowerPoint presentation lined up, tonight we'll be doing a public hearing on adopting sewer service charges to be added to the 2025, 2026 property tax rolls. Just a quick background, our city municipal code allows the sewer service charges to be collected through the county property tax roll. That process has been undertaken since the city incorporated and took over the county sanitation district in 1984. Part of the requirements under the municipal code is that we hold a public hearing around this time each year to receive any potential objections to placement of the sewer service charges on next year's property tax roll. And as a reminder to the council and the community, the charges are fixed rates, and they are collected again with the property taxes. We have approximately 5,600 parcels, which are going to generate approximately $5.7 million a year for just the sewer enterprise fund, which handles all operations and capital needs of just the city's sewer system. For those that receive the property tax roll, it will be itemized and appear as a Tascadero sewer charge. The deadline is fast approaching to get this on the property tax roll. And then the county, for this kind of processing fee, there's an additional $2 per property. Short and sweet. And with that, staff recommends we conduct a public hearing that the mayor will facilitate after this, and adopt a draft resolution approving the sewer service charges to be added to the 2025, 2026 property tax rolls, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Betts. Does any member of the council have any questions for staff? Councilmember Funk.
Sure. On, I always check these over. So on page 98, there's one really memorable sewer bill that, for a little over $219,000. I've checked the accessories parcel number, and that does appear to be located at the Bordeaux Apartments. Can staff confirm that that pertains to all of the roughly 400 units in that complex in one single bill?
That is, that is correct. That's the Bordeaux Apartments. That's our number one customer, if you will. And what we often see with apartments and some mobile home parks as well is the, kind of, the property manager kind of facilitates the sewer service charges. So we send it all to the property manager, and then they divvy out based on the number of units and whatnot. So it's one bill, and then they divvy it up to their, to their residents, if you will.
Great. This size of the bill makes sense, given the number of units in that property. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from council or staff on this item? Okay, okay. All right, with that, we'll open up this item to any public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak, please approach the podium. Okay, seeing done, we will bring it back to council for a motion.
I motion, we adopt.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second the motion to adopt staff's recommendations.
Okay, thank you. And by the way, everybody, this is just a routine annual action that has to occur in order to place the sewer charges on the bill. Okay, with that, let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom.
Yes.
Councilmember Peak.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Deres.
Yes.
Mayor Borbo.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Right. And that was a motion by Peak and second by Funk.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Okay, with that, we will move on to our, another item here. Ready to go to management reports, item H1, a 2024 risk management update. And this will be presented by our Laura Christiansen.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. Give it a second while it comes up. We did a little deep dive last year. We hadn't brought you one of these before, and then we did ask Tim Cars, who is our regional representative manager, risk manager for CJPIA, to come back again this year with councilmember Peak being new to the council. We also wanted to make sure that he got to hear from Tim, got to meet him, and hear a little bit more deep dive into CJPIA, what our relationship's like, what it looks like for our risk management here in the city. And Mr. Knight, if you could just advance to this, we'll just really quickly. So essentially, our risk management program is through our relationship with CJPIA. They are a provider for claims coverage, and they also act as the city's agent for claims processing and litigation. Working through the CJPIA and the city's risk management program, we minimize the risk to the city, whether that's through employee injury claims, third-party liability claims, property loss. Where our program, excuse me, with CJPA, helps us to minimize those risks, and that includes a wide range of mitigation and prevention services. So it's safety training where we do tailgates with our Public Works Department, or we do safety trainings with police and fire. We do citywide safety training. So it's that type of risk mitigation. It's implementing policies. CJPIA has always been a partner in helping to create draft policies that they then push out to the other jurisdictions that we can then modify to fit within what, how we operate here. It's helping to provide staff development training, whether that be from supervisor, supervisory academies, city council academies for new council members, all the way up to academies for city managers. And then it's also operational guidance. So as things are coming up, things that you might not normally think about, public records requests. Those are trainings that CJPIA also has or puts out or includes as part of their annual conference. So working with the CJPIA really does increase the city's education and then risk prevention. Can you go to, thanks. I'll turn this one over to Mr. Cars, let him talk a little bit more about our program areas, just to give you a real quick idea of what those look like, and then we'll continue on. Thank you, Mr. Cars.
Thank you, Ms. Christiansen. I appreciate the introduction. Actually, that was a great introduction to the California JPIA as well. Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, thank you for having me here. I really appreciate it. My name's Tim Cars, and I'm the senior risk manager, and I've had the privilege of working with the city for over 10 years. I work with all of our members in San Luis Obispo County. As we heard, the California JPIA is a risk-sharing pool. We have 128 agencies, 80% of which are cities, the other 20% are special districts all throughout California. And we are essentially self-insured for the programs that you see here, workers' compensation, general liability, property insurance, and then a few ancillary programs that the city chooses to cover with us. The city has been a part of our group for over 20 years, and I'm happy to report that the city has been in good standing and is a healthy member of ours for, for many, many years, and we really appreciate that. All the things that we just heard about, all the, all the partnership opportunities, training, and loss control activities, there's two ways to that partnership, and, and the city is definitely part of that. I have a privilege of working with a lot of the department heads and all of the department individuals that are here and, and not here on a daily basis to identify risk and work to manage that risk as best we can. In fact, the, the city performs better than our pool averages in all of our major programs through the normalized claim cost. What that means is the cost of claims, as measured against the city's payroll, we can measure you against all the other agencies in our group to determine how well we are managing those claims, what kinds of claims are, are coming in, and how well we're able to close those out and manage those as best as possible. Those costs are lower than our pool average for the rest of our pool for the city. So we appreciate that. That has a lot to do with the city's efforts here. I'm here to answer any questions or talk more about any of our specific programs, if you'd like. But I think there's a remaining presentation here with some, some charts and other information. I'll be happy to comment on any of those, too, if you'd like.
Perhaps if you would go through the rest of the presentation and any other questions.
Great.
So this is a little bit of what we were talking about in risk mitigation and prevention, which is called the loss cap program. This is what we do with the CJPIA where we looked at, we look at our city policies and our programs. We talk about our contractual language. We look at insurance requirements. We have assessments done for our public facilities. And then we address training procedures and programs. And so that really kind of gets us to being at a place where we are looking at risk, we're evaluating risk, and then we are taking the necessary steps to mitigate that as best that we can. And so we do that regularly with our CJ, with Tim, with Mr. Cars, and with other agencies that are part of CJPIA. And then just really, really quickly for a recap of this past year, again, our costs are, our claims are below our pool average, which is great when you know that there's 128 agencies that are part of that. And of those 128, only 40 or so have full service like we do with police and fire. On workers' compensation, we're consistent with the pool average in major, major causation categories, meaning we're, we look the same as everybody else. We are not having high spikes in something, someone else's not seeing, or, you know, that we're having odd or reoccurring ones that would stand out. So we're mitigating that. Our departments are great about safety, about training, about follow-up. And when things start to look like we're in a pattern, that they address those so that we bring our claims back down. Again, the majority of losses, like all cities, see them in our, your physically active departments, so police, fire, Public Works. And then we also do have a zoo, which also does see claims, like a city that maybe have animal services, same idea. And then the majority of claims for both workers' compensation and, and general liability are closed, which is a big deal, that they are rapidly being taken care of and addressed. And with that, I will turn it over. Oh, and then you can just see the little chart. And with that, I will turn it over. Oh, and then you can just see the little chart where our severity and then kind of how our claim frequency dipped, kind of went back up in twenty-two, twenty-three, especially for liability claims. That really was adjusted because of the storms that we had. And then you can see we came back down now that we haven't had major incident like that. And then workers' comp stays pretty relative. Twenty-one, twenty-two was a little bit harder every year, but we're back to being pretty consistent. And with that, I will turn it over in case there are any questions or discussion. Thank you.
I will go to my colleagues' write-off question first, if you'd get, go back to that slide, please. The, are these claim amounts or these actual payments out?
That's the total severity. So that's all together, what we've paid out on any of the claims for an entire year.
Okay, so these are payouts. You know, the claimed amount might have been much, much higher than that.
No, so that's total that we've paid out for all of the claims for that year, all the closed claims for that year. That's the total we've paid out.
Right. No, I understand, but people might claim a million dollar damage.
Yes, most definitely. Yes.
Okay, understand. All right.
Actually, I believe what we're looking at are is total incurred. So some of these dollar figures are, might be reserved. And we might, if we're still managing those claims.
On some of them, yes.
Okay, but we reserve, put money aside.
Yeah, when a claim happens, we manage that claim on behalf of the city with a third-party administrator called Coral Warren. We are required to reserve the likely amount of that claim, whether or not it's the city's responsibility or not, and we manage that amount over time as we learn more about the claim. And in some cases, we close it out without paying anything, and in other cases, we do have to pay. But in all cases, we are working with the city to make sure that if anything is being paid, it's because it is required to be paid, and it is the city's responsibility.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Well, I'll start with any other council questions on my right. Go ahead. Councilmember Funk?
Just if the equivalent in the healthcare world would be incurred but not reported, those are the, the value of claims that are, have been received and are in the house, then, as you were saying, have been reserved on, but have not yet been final adjudicated. Do we know what the approximate value is of claims that are in that kind of status?
Being self-insured as a public agency, we're a public agency as well, our funding methodology takes into account the incurred but not reported values, because we don't know what those are yet. So our value of what the city is paying, that the dollar amount is mostly based on actual experience and the city's payroll. So we do not anticipate claims happening or anything being, any judgments or anything being made against the city. We just react to those if they happen. And the city being self-insured, it's managed through our program based on the funding methodology.
Okay, and in terms of incurred and reported but not yet adjudicated, are those claims, those dollars are not reflected here, right? Because this is based on paid claims.
Yes, they are reflected here.
Oh, okay.
These are all claims and values that we have that we're managing for you. As you could see in the twenty-two, twenty-three year, there's a high bar. That's not reflective of how much we've actually spent on behalf of the city. That's the value of the claims that we've received for that year. And hopefully, over time, that number will go down. As you could see with liability claims, they start high, and over time, they they nudge down as we start to determine who's responsible for what actually happened.
Sure. And in a major storm event, we're going to have some claims.
That's true.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem Deras?
Thank you. Yeah, on this, both of these charts, as was just mentioned, twenty-twenty-three, the liability is very high, but very, very low on the workers' comp. Are they related? Is there a specific reason, or did we just have a good year on the workers' comp in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three?
They aren't related, but twenty-two, twenty-three was, we had a significant less amount of claims than we have had in other years, so they were keeping themselves fairly.
Good, okay. It is significant. I just didn't know there was some specific identifiable reason, or everybody was just being good. Good. Thank you.
Any questions, Councilmember Peak?
Similarly, twenty-one, twenty-two, did that have anything to do with a cold that was going around, or was that like something that was spiked out of nowhere? Workers' comp claims is, was it a culture of workers' comp, you know, non-safety related? I mean, is it?
No, those are likely, I don't think I dug in, but those could very well have been likely related to, again, some rollover from COVID-19 and follow up on that as well during that beginning of that.
So we did see a lot of claims in regards to people getting sick?
We did, yes, between twenty-twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two, we did. Yep.
Thanks.
Okay, seeing other questions, I will open this up, see if there's any public comment on this item. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council, and this is just a receive and file, correct? So there is no action, no motion needed on the part of council. Okay, thank you. We will proceed then to item H2, which is introduction of a draft ordinance with rather long verbiage, so I will let our city clerk, Laura Christiansen, explain that. Thank you.
Thank you. So essentially, let's wait a second. We yearly, the, those who are on the city council or those who are running for city council or have run for city council are required by the FPPC, the Fair Political Practices Commission, to file what are called campaign forms. Those campaign forms then report out to the public about what what money's been raised, where it's been spent. And then that has to be collected by the city clerk's office for that jurisdiction, and then put online for the public to review. Those are semi-annual when it's not an election, so those are due twice a year. And then when it is an election, there are several pre-election statements that are due. Then there are certain reports that maybe do a twenty-four-hour report if you've received a certain amount of money within that time period that you also have to. And when you, we have been lucky here, but in some cities, when you have a large number of people running at the same time, collecting those, following up on those, requesting amendments, keeping track of all of those can get to be a bit cumbersome. We also have had over several years, a lot of treasurers for our candidates and our council members reach out and request to be able to submit them electronically in order to make it a bit easier for filing purposes. And so in looking into all of that, we have found a company, NetFile, which is also the same company that the FPPC uses for those council members planning commissioners who have to file directly with the FPPC for their conflict of interest statement. That's your Form 700, that's your financial interest. Those, they also use NetFile. What it does is it collects your form, and then it maintains that. So then the next year, when it comes time to file, your information's already in there, makes it much quicker, more streamlined to then update for that next filing year. Works the same way with your campaign filing, keeps your information there. You can easily access access it. You're not having to go back to a copy of a printed piece of paper. You don't have to print it out if your treasurer is outside of the area. You don't have to mail forms back and forth to get signatures. And so in effect, this will streamline the process, both for the person needing to file the paperwork and for the city clerk's office in receiving, in verifying, in getting them posted by the seventy-two-hour deadline, and then making it available for the public to review, especially because a lot of these require redactions when there's personal information that's included with the donations. And so we have contracted, oops, sorry, I'm going too fast. We've contracted with NetFile. They are going to create that for us. Then everyone who files will be given the ability to sign up, will get a password, and then can go on immediately and start using it for filing campaign filings when they're due, when they're due, and then we will also extend that out to our Form 700 filer. So those who don't file directly with the FPPC will now be able to use our city's system to file, and then it'll make that immediately available for the public to see and review if they so wish. And because we would like to do that, the FPPC requires, or state law requires, that the council pass an ordinance to then move forward with accepting them electronically. This fits with both what the Secretary of State's office, the FPPC has done in terms of starting to move things more digital. Also with the council and passing a resolution last year in moving things more digital and our commitment to digitization, this will also move us forward in that. And so what we're asking council to do tonight is introduce for first reading by title only, a draft ordinance amending the Atascadero Municipal Code Title II, which is Administration, Chapter fourteen, which is Elections, to add Section two dash fourteen point oh three, which is Electronic Filing of Campaign Disclosure Statements and Statements of Economic Interest to allow for the implementation of this electronic filing system for FPPC forms, including campaign forms and Form 700 forms. And with that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. I imagine this will be appreciated by my colleagues, who are a lot more technologically savvy than I, and if anybody will have a problem with it, it'll, it'll be me. So, all right, with that, do we have any councilmember questions of staff?
So will the new form, because I'm the most recent person having to do all those fun forms this past year. If you miss a box, you send it in, and you'll correct us, or this will auto-correct. They'll say, hey, you missed this box. This will save a lot of time, staff time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Everybody's life easier.
Yep, it'll let you know.
More efficient.
Absolutely. All those things. Yes, thank you, Councilmember Peak.
Yes, wouldn't want to turn you into a felon because you forgot to check a box, so that's a good thing. All right, any other questions of staff from council? Okay, seeing none, I am opening this up to public comment. Does any member of the public comment wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing no one approach, we'll bring it back to council for a motion.
I will move that we approve the ordinance as written by staff, let's see, two for online filing.
I would be delighted to second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Protem Deras and a second by Councilmember Funk. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Deras?
Yes.
Mayor Borbo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. With that, we will move to item H3, which is an update on zoo rebranding process, next steps. I believe we have online from Hawaii on vacation, a long-scheduled vacation, Ms. Terry Banish, our Director of Community Services and Promotions. And so thank you, Terry, for participating. You're not showing up on my screen. There she is.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry. Anyway, thank you for taking time out from your vacation to present this item. We really, really appreciate that.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you, Mayor Borbo and City Council. So this evening, we are here to talk about the rebranding and update everybody, talk about next steps. This presentation will hopefully answer all the questions that have been circulating out there, and also the details behind the rebrand. So as Mr. Knight gets our presentation up and running, we can kind of go over all of that. While we're waiting on that, we will provide-
Terry, we can see it here.
Oh, you can see it. I can't see it. How about that? Okay, I'll just go as I go. So tonight, we'll be providing information on branding the zoo. There we are. And the importance of the name change, the history of the zoo, future sustainability, and its importance to continue accreditation, as well as next steps for rebranding revenue growth and marketing zoo two point oh. Next slide, please. As we get started, it's important to review the importance of branding the zoo, what that means and why. And first and foremost, in this digital age, it's important to have a solid brand that promotes an expanded geographical area that results in more financial support. Outside of Atascadero, people do not know Charles Paddock Zoo. And with the change, we'll gain more revenue and more people, and they'll find us as a result. So the digital age is why the name needs to change. I know there's been a lot of questions around that. You have to have a name recognizable to search. For instance, if you are in Southern California and you're searching Central Coast, now you'll see the Central Coast Zoo. So in digital advertising, you kind of have to step back and look and view it as if you were a visitor and you're planning a trip, and what's in it for me? And if you're someone from out of the area, Central Coast Zoo is going to be more searchable and certainly more recognizable name, and ultimately greater exposure for Charles Paddock. In addition to the new logo, Atascadero, California will be displayed prominently on the bottom of the logo across all branding efforts in and out of the area. The only time it won't be is when you have the sign at the zoo and you're already in Atascadero. So outreach, too, has been something that we have been doing over the past eighteen months. We have reached out with meetings with our longtime county supporters and lifetime supporters. We have talked to the Atascadero Tourism Business Improvement District Advisory Board and Visit Slow Cal Tourism Improvement District. We've had meetings with them and asking them for different names as well and suggestions. We surveyed two hundred and eighty-one people. That was an unbiased sampling that was done over a well-attended event with a demographic that included attendees that were local and county residents, as well as visitors in all ages from twenty-one up to sixty-five years of age. And the name that was the favorite was Central Coast Zoo. There were three other choices, Atascadero Zoo, Slow Cal Zoo, and of course, Charles Paddock Zoo, and Central Coast Zoo was the winner of that. Next slide, please. With the history of the zoo, it's important to incorporate Charles Paddock as a part of the zoo's history. The signage and statue of the zoo's main entrance will be renamed to Charles Paddock Plaza. We will also have information on our website, centralcoastzoo.org, that will have a whole history page. We also have a new activity book for the children that's going to be at camps as well as schools and all of that, that will have a history piece on the back page of that book. And also, you know, continue our marketing efforts on social media and across all the different things that we're doing. So the story of Charles Paddock will now have a greater impact, and our founder will receive more recognition than ever before. Charles Paddock has even been included, you know, on the entire page of this activity book, and that provides Paddock even more exposure to honoring him as a founder of the zoo. So our little gem of a zoo will, as they say, go big. So that's a good thing. Next slide, please. As we know, the zoo's been accredited, an accredited zoological facility for over thirty years now. Having first achieved accreditation back in nineteen ninety-one, which is really huge accomplishment for us, not only for our hometown zoo, but also for the city. We were just reaccredited in March of twenty-twenty-five for another five years. And with that commitment to AZA, it's even more important to rebrand, as we need to work to be financially sustainable, and rebranding is a major part of this. The purpose of the name change is a necessary business decision. More importantly, it's absolutely important to be a part of an AZA-accredited institution. It is necessary for animal welfare, our conservation and education efforts, as well as for the entire zoo. If we lose our accreditation, we'll lose a large number of the animal collection that we have current, that we currently have. And as a result, we will go back to being a roadside petting zoo that will continue to struggle financially. Next slide, please. With our commitment to AZA and the ability to obtain our financial goal is the rebranding initiative. And this rebrand is key to broaden the zoo's visibility, appeal, and strengthen and expand marketing and sponsorship opportunities. As part of our commitment to AZA and accreditation, the name needed to be changed as a part of the rebranding in an effort to be financially sustainable. Rebranding will cast a larger net from Ventura to Monterey County and position us for more opportunities with eligibility for funding and grants from certain foundations, corporations, sponsorship donors, and other sources. So it definitely positions the zoo for a broader audience and increases the opportunities for funding for the zoo's geographic geographically that support the long-term goal of revenue stability and aligns with accreditation requirements. Next slide, please. Next steps for rebranding, marketing and revenue growth. So what we have already done is we have launched our branding campaign, which includes our logos and color palettes and guidelines. We also have signage that we've implemented at the zoo. We have changed out the website with our new logo, as well as our social media. We have launched the new children's education book and implemented it out there to the hotels. We have three hotels that currently have the books. They will be giving those books to families as they come and stay. We'll also have the opportunity to do a PDF where different teachers can print out different pages and teach kids on education with the zoo and conservation and all the messages that we're doing. And then next steps, we have a digital and traditional media campaign that will launch mid-July and go through mid-October. We are working on the online ticketing platform, so people can go online and buy tickets to the zoo, as well as we can introduce new programs at the zoo that can be purchased online. We will also have new children's placemats to restaurants in the local area that will be distributed and really get the word out, because it is surprising to know that a lot of people that actually live in our city do not know that we have a zoo, and that always frustrates me. So this is one opportunity to really get the word out, not only to our visitors, but also to our local audience and our county residents as well. In progress, we have zoo habitat sponsorship going on. And as I pull some examples, this kind of gives you an idea of some of the things we have. You can see the logo to your left of the- You can see the logo to your left of the screen, Central Coast Zoo, Atascadero, California. This is the full logo that has the tagline, unlock the secrets of the wild, learning and conservation at every turn. And then our newest ad that we'll be publishing in the official Midstate Fair Guide, we have that over there with Mendrew, so you can see what that looks like and how the logo looks in like a reverse white. It's a great logo. It captures the tree that we already have in place and really incorporate incorporates the animals that we have at the zoo, what you can expect at the zoo. So it's a, it's a fun logo to work with. It's got a lot of activity in it, but it is a lot of fun to work with that logo. It really tells who we are and really kind of digs it down to the roots of who we are. Next slide, please. As far as fiscal impact and preparation for the rebranding process, as part of the zoo's budget, as well as the city's marketing budget collectively, we have already put in place about the $45,000, because we had to do this with the unveiling of Ice Cream Safari, unveiling the zoo and everything. So the branding piece of that, we worked with Tom Jones Out Agency and hand in hand on doing this new brand. And those costs have already been allocated to establishing the brand, the logo, the color palette, the activity books. We printed 2,000 of those exterior signage at the zoo that are currently in place, the three different signs. And then we're also now continuing to replace signage in the zoo, as well as on our website and all of that. So that kind of gives you an idea of where we are with our rebrand and what we have launched so far. Next slide, please. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer. This shows the new sign on the building over at the zoo. Really kind of helps when you drive into the zoo to see that, because a lot of people come in and they don't know where the zoo is. And this kind of helps them once they arrive. First impressions are very important. And this is one of those first impressions that we have in place. Any questions?
Right. Thank you, Director Banish. And I will note that I asked staff to put this item on the agenda so that, you know, we expected some public comment. If we had just had it or allowed a public comment during community forum, but as noted, we cannot discuss items not on the agenda. So if we had left this under community forum, we would not really be able to have any substantive discussion. So, you know, we created an item with a staff report and so we can converse more about it. So with that, I want to see if there's any members of the council with, who might have a question for Director Banish. And again, thank you for taking time from your vacation to-
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Deres.
Thank you. Director Banish, you and I had spoke and a lot of people have asked me a question on the name and why we couldn't go with, with the name of Charles Paddock's Central Coast Zoo or something to that effect. If you could just talk a little bit more about the name that was chosen and why maybe it's too long, too short, whatever it might be. But if you could just talk a little bit more on that, thank you.
Absolutely. So a couple of things. Charles Paddock and Atascadero together. Nobody knows where Atascadero is and nobody knows Charles Paddock. I mean, outside of our area, that's the toughest thing. When we were looking at Central Coast Charles Paddock Zoo, it's too long and you're going to lose the momentum that you need to have a rebrand that's solid and it's Central Coast Zoo and it's easy for people to remember and it's easy for people to understand. If we throw Charles Paddock in that, it's too long. And when you're looking at searchability and all these different things, it just doesn't work. Atascadero is another word that's super long, but it's important in this logo that you have Central Coast Zoo, Atascadero, California. We don't want to lose the location. That's what this is all about, is to make sure that we have, you know, a location that is, is specific to where that is. And I'll use another example for us. Zoo Tampa used to be the Lowry Park Zoo and nobody knew where Lowry Park was. I'm from South Florida, would never even know where Lowry Park is. They rebranded to Zoo Tampa at Lowry Park and through time, now it's Zoo Tampa. But again, it's these, you know, you have Los Angeles Zoo, you have the Santa Barbara Zoo. You have to kind of think in those instances where we're doing exactly that and making it more of a marketable brand without, you know, too long of the words being in there.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Continuing on my left, Councilmember Peak, do you have a question?
Yeah, can, maybe administrative staff can comment on this too, but can we talk about the deficit the zoo's been running on for the last number of years? And not this has anything to do directly with renaming it, but just in terms of the health of the zoo and, and, and how rare it is for a city to actually own a zoo and, and how it's not, I mean, it's not common for a city to own a zoo and accreditation process doesn't recommend it.
Right.
Can you clarify, can someone clarify the deficit we've been running on and-
Yes, I can, I can speak to that a little bit and I know Jerry can chime in. So the deficit we've been running on with the Charles Paddock Zoo is 750,000 a year, give or take. That is the deficit that we have. We are definitely under a challenge investment with our 340,000, which we, is helping us get the necessary funding to bring on a full-time zookeeper and growing programs like Animal Encounters and things like that and a full-time maintenance position. So we're already, we have a goal that we have to hit and we have a plan that we're working on to put in place to hit all of these pieces. So we get out of this deficit. So we have the three-year timeframe to do that. That's something that, you know, this is going to help us with that and making that, close that deficit and make it not as wide.
So follow-up question, can you make some sort of comment on how close we were to not being accredited this year or how much of a, an effort we went through to be accredited this year? I know it was about a year process of all hands on deck.
Yes, year process of all hands on deck. It was certainly a heavy lift to the point where when we were in front of the commissioners, they were still waffling on kind of giving us that, you know, extension basically and not being, making our accreditation. But because of the financial support and the backing from city council to city manager, to the team and everybody, it took all hands on deck to make the decision to go ahead and accredit us. Based on the momentum that they are seeing, all the different goals and things we have in place, our rebranding was presented to them as well and just a ton of financial support. The Friends of the Charles Paddock Zoo have done an amazing job of really pulling together and getting everything organized that way. That's a big part of it. All of these things had to happen to get our accreditation. So I definitely, this is a big part of that. If we were to change our name or do a pause or do anything like that and go back to Charles Paddock, we definitely would be looking to lose accreditation.
Is that a fact?
That is pretty much a fact. Yes.
All right, thank you. I'll go to my right, Councilmember Newsom.
I'm gonna see if I can talk without losing my voice. One of the challenges that this council has faced and councils before us is, is without this AZA accreditation, it makes our zoo a lot more challenged. If we don't have AZA accreditation, what is the responsibility of the city or the council? If they don't also meet that three-year criteria for being self-sustaining?
So in not meeting accreditation, I mean, one of the things that would happen, as I mentioned a little earlier in the presentation, is we would lose a lot of our, you know, animals that we have collectively or animal collection that we have as part of being an AZA member. I can definitely defer to Dr. Cynthia to talk more specifically about the other pieces. But it, it would, if we lost accreditation, it will take us a number of years to even be back accredited again. And that, the value behind that and the gold standard behind that is pretty significant. So it's, you know, you kind of go back to that roadside, roadside zoo plan, if you will. And we would, we would struggle financially, for sure.
If I could just chime in really quick, I think it would be important to note that the zoo currently costs the city about 1.5 million. That's the city's investment in the zoo. And so with having the zoo and, and having the, the, the memberships that we do now and the visitors that we do now, I mean, obviously, we're bringing in about half that at the 750,000. But where you start to lose the animals, you start to lose the momentum that you get with having AZA, with the animals coming in, with being able to qualify for grants, with getting donors and sponsors and that type of stuff. Then we start looking at the, the city taking on more of an investment in the zoo, because you will be losing some of that financial assistance that we're getting to offset. And we're already at a $750,000 deficit. So AZA accreditation is incredibly important to continuing in the future of the zoo and continuing to have something of value that people from here in the community, our larger region, and then outside our region, our visitors want to continue to come to.
Thank you. I think it's important to point out that without making all of these changes, it does end up causing us to be challenged, the city council, to keep the zoo open operationally if it's not financially sustainable. And we have been sustaining it for quite some time. When I was originally brought on to council, it was brought up, there's a chance that we could close the zoo if it doesn't sustain itself. So I think that it's important to put out there that is one of the challenges that staff and council are constantly addressing, is the sustainability of the zoo. And the AZA was very fundamental in making sure that we had the future of a zoo.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Funk.
Yes, following up on my colleague's comments on AZA accreditation and its importance. One thing we haven't talked about, but I understand in the AZA accreditation standards, are expectations regarding governance. If this council were to intervene in the day-to-day operations of the zoo and countermand the rebranding or direct staff to change that, then what impact would that have on the, our compliance with governance standards that AZA expects of, of top-quality zoos?
Sure. And I think that's what Director Banish was a bit alluding to, is that if we pause the momentum that we have, if we go back on the things that we have told with accreditation through direction from our governing authority, then that violates one of the accreditation standards, which is that there is a difference between your governing authority and your day-to-day operations and that the governing authority makes your high-level policy decisions and then defers to operations for day-to-day decisions on how best to operate the zoo, whether that be from marketing experts on how you make your zoo financially healthy and sustainable for animal care, for any of those day-to-day operations for the zoo to continue forward. Those need to be very separate and that is one of the AZA guidelines. It is called governing, it is called governance. And so that is one of the things as part of our accreditation that the committee did look at. And that was one of the things that they were incredibly impressed by, is the level of separation between the governing authority here in the city and the day-to-day operations of the zoo and where the governing authority here makes high-level decisions, policy decisions, such as go after accreditation and then gives that to operations to then figure out what that means and then go and make sure that we are putting into place the things we need to do to become operational in that way to further the AZA, you know, education, conservation, financial health, those types of things that also exist as accreditation standards. So then when you start to muddy that and then you start, the operational decisions start to be made by the governing authority. That is one of the things that they do look at. And Dr. Stringfield can speak to this more, but she does have to give a report out at the annual meeting in September, at the annual conference in September, she does need to give a report out on our progress. As, as Director Banish was saying, so while we did get accreditation, they are still monitoring us and making sure that we are continuing to meet those standards and are on that forward trajectory that we told them we were on and that we are following through with those plans that we put forward to them.
So if this council were even to ask just to, you know, can we put the, I don't, I'm not even sure if we could put the rebranding efforts on hold, if you will, for a few months, because, because it sounds like it's, it's really much further along the line from what Director Banish has, has clarified. But if that, if there were a way to pause whatever hasn't been done on that for a period of time, that would cause, would that cause Dr. Stringfield to have to report out to ACA that we're not in compliance with the plan?
It would. And, you know, we have already implemented the name change. We've changed, we've, you know, expended the money, as Director Banish mentioned. So we've already expended that money. We've changed the name. We've changed our social media presence. We've changed our website. And in fact, AZA themselves has already changed our name. And so for us to then change that, we'd have to report back to AZA and ask them to then change our name back. So that is something Dr. Stringfield would have to report. She does also have to report on the conversations, like when we bring these types of updates to council. That is something that she does need to report out to AZA is when we are having these conversations with our governing authority. She does need to include those in her report out. So most definitely, yes.
Okay, thank you. Could you comment, and this probably goes to Director Banish, but the extent to which, among other AZA zoos, is it common for zoos to have personal names of founders incorporated into the name of the zoo? For, for the, I mean, I, I understand it might be common in, in, in less classy zoos than, than those that are accredited, but in the accredited ones.
It's less common now to have a name assigned to a zoo than it maybe used to be. And that's why a lot of these zoos have changed to, like Santa Barbara Zoo, used to be the name of somebody who, you know, owned the zoo. Lowry's, Lowry Park for Zoo Tampa is another one. So they've gone now to the Zoo Tampa platform of, you know, that exposure and that marketability and, you know, really making a difference with attendance and visitors and all the branding that happens with that. So it's, it's, at this point, a lot of these zoos are, they're, they don't have the name per se of an individual in them.
Okay, thank you. And it's also worth looking at what we do locally in our own homegrown traditions. And let me turn back to Assistant City Manager Christensen on that. Did, do we have, and for instance, our founder is, is E.G. Lewis. Do we have any city facilities that are named for our, the founder of our city?
We, we don't. Our, our major facilities here in the city are more related to where they are, their location, or what they are. So our Colony Park Community Center, we have City Hall Administration Building, we have the Pavilion, we have the Ranger House. So they don't carry the name of a specific individual. They're more related to their function or their location.
Okay. And there have been some folks in the online chatter that, that have been expressed a concern that this is a, a plot, if you will, to, to move towards selling off the naming rights of the zoo to somebody. Is there any such effort anticipated or in progress?
No, I think as both Director Banish and I just mentioned, the, what AZA is really looking for, what other AZA accredited zoos have done is name themselves based on their location, right? And so draw to know where they are. And so that's the point of this rebranding, is how we, you know, draw more visitors in, how we have a bigger presence. And so it isn't for anyone to come in and be the highest bidder on the zoo. It is to meet our AZA accreditation standards, to meet the requirements we need to, to continue to show that we can compete with the other AZA zoos that are out there. As a very small zoo, it is strong competition because they have a much larger budget, right? To compete with, they are bringing in a lot more revenue than we are. And so for us to be the size we are and to have AZA accreditation is a huge accomplishment for us. And for us to continue to do that, you know, every time recently, at least since I've been with the city and we've gone for accreditation, it has been a struggle to get there, but they- recognize the commitment that the community, that the city has to that accreditation and continues to give us that and recognize that. And so this is another way of us that we are turning around and showing that we have that level of commitment and that we want to continue our accreditation.
Okay. And none of the branding would prohibit the Friends of the Zoo from doing something where you have bricks like we have at the Faces of Freedom, or somebody gets naming rights on a bench, or even like Thelma Vetter donating the entire animal habitat? You know, that, that works for, I'm assuming that that for many accredited zoos, that those kinds of individual experience naming are very common?
Yes, those are.
And help zoos to pull in the resources needed so that these animal conservation objectives could be achieved?
Yeah, that's a big way to fundraise. That's a big way to get someone to donate a large amount of money for a habitat, for a new area of the zoo, for new equipment. That, that's a big fundraising effort that way.
This rebranding will also help, will also help the Friends too, as they go to do their own rebranding for donors and for that, for all of the different support that we're looking for with our capital campaign, that sort of thing, and funding. So it's, it's a very important piece.
Okay. And thank you. And then one last question. In Mr. Phillips, and he's very thoughtful editorial, the editor, the editor, question whether, how much value does the more geographically descriptive name really add to the search process? And so you touched on that in your presentation. If you could just expound a little bit more on that to help us all better understand that question.
Absolutely. So because of the digital age, we're having to do a lot more with search and with, you know, the marketing and marketability. When you have, you know, Central Coast Zoo, for instance, versus Charles Paddock Zoo, and if I'm going to travel to this area, and I'm like, what's there to do for kids on the Central Coast? Central Coast Zoo might populate at that point, but not Charles Paddock Zoo. You can buy search, you can spend more money doing those type of things, but it's just not a natural way to search and not a natural way to Google things. They're not going to know Charles Paddock. They're not going to know how to do a Tascadero. So we've proven that over and over again with Visit a Tascadero and San Luis Obispo and just Slow Cal, all of those pieces. It's, Central Coast is more of a dominant search piece. And when people are coming to our area, that's where we'll have a lot more momentum. We'll have more discovery. We'll have more reach. We'll have a larger audience that we'll be able to cast a net out to because they will be grabbing Central Coast Zoo where they wouldn't have before. You can spend all the money in the world in marketing in this area, but if you have the right name and the right branding, you should be able to really excel. So it's definitely a long-term gain with changing the name and the footprint, the way that we are, have been working on with Central Coast Zoo.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. I'll have a couple of minor questions that will wait until after public comment. With that, I would like to open this up to public comment and invite people who wish to speak to approach the podium. Please don't wait till the podium is empty. I would also, in particular, like to, if he would, if he would like to speak, here from Mr. Luke Phillips, who initiated an online petition on this subject, and also hear from the Friends of the Zoo, if they have a representative, I know there are representatives of the Friends in the audience, and if any of them would like to speak, we'd like to hear from you. So we'll begin with Mr. Phillips. And again, if anybody else would like to speak, please don't wait. Please line up behind the podium. Thank you. Mr. Phillips, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Burbow, council members, and fellow Tascadero residents. My name is Luke Phillips. I am the person who recently organized the position to preserve the name of the Charles Paddock Zoo. Like many in this community, I supported that effort out of a genuine desire to protect something that I felt was tied to our local identity and history, and to protect the legacy of a man who was widely admired and respected in the community. I expected to be here this evening to speak for the many other community members who feel that same way. However, I'm here tonight to say that I no longer support that effort. I have closed my petition and withdrawn my personal support for keeping the zoo's former name. My decision comes after Mayor Burbow shared with me just yesterday some fairly serious allegations about Mr. Paddock that came out in the past that were unknown to me and to most of the public at large, and even to a lot of people who knew Mr. Paddock personally. It came as quite a shock to a lot of people. While I don't plan on going into any of the details, out of a respect for the seriousness of that matter, and due to my own personal lack of knowledge of the details of that case, the facts of the matter seem to come from legitimate sources and be fairly clear. And in that new context, that fundamentally changes my personal feelings about continuing to fight for Mr. Paddock's legacy and the name change at the zoo. I want to thank everyone who supported my petition in good faith. I know your support came from a place of civic pride, love for the zoo, care for our community, and respect for our local history. I also want to thank Mr. Burbow for bringing this difficult and important information to my attention. It is not easy to walk back on something so publicly, but I could not keep supporting this once I knew the full story. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. The next speaker, please.
My name's Jelaine Foot. I've lived here for 70 years, and I remember when the zoo was two cages and a couple of animals. And it was wonderful. I had never seen those animals before, and it grew to four cages. And Mr. Paddock, I don't know about anything else. Like I said, I've lived there 70 years, and I haven't heard anything bad about Mr. Paddock. He's the one that brought those animals in. And that name that you put up there says nothing about a Tascadero except for in small print underneath it. So that doesn't mean anything either. Anytime you go into, it's like the dog places that I support, then I, and I share on Facebook. You can touch a button and go in and you see the address, the phone number, everything, if you go online. People go online for everything these days. So I don't think that's a problem. It should say, it should say Mr. Paddock, and it should say a Tascadero. I don't know what Central Coast means. If someone sees Central Coast, they go, oh, Central Coast, and who knows where it is. So I just, I just would like to see it stay the same and not, not go into a business. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
My name is Dean Young. I'm a resident. My family has lived here since 61. We've known Chuck, knew him for years. He was a scout leader. He was a well-respected person of this community. Central Coast runs anywhere from San Francisco down to Ventura. Central Coast means nothing. I have Googled Charles Paddock, comes up. Central Coast, a lot of things come up. It doesn't, the Central Coast doesn't mean anything. Get out of the area, people knew where a Tascadero is. What I really wanted to talk was address the letter that Mark sent to somebody, saying that people don't know where the, where the business, where the town is. Why do we need a new name? Maybe update the logo, the branding, do the other things you already say you're doing, the new educational children's book, you know, all these other things that he wrote in here. But the name is not, you know, does not need to change. I think it's just an excuse, and I hope you guys will reverse it.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
I used to do Chuck Pickard Services. Somebody accused of a crime does not mean they did the crime. So you're condemning a person without due process.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, Mr. Clicker.
Yes, my name is Don Clicker, and I have been in a Tascadero since 1970. I'd like to thank council and staff for the work that you've put in on this whole city. And we have made so many improvements, and thank you for everything, certainly including the El Camino Strip. As to the zoo, I was there today again, after having been at the unveiling of the name. And I looked specifically at the Charles Paddock Plaza with the statue of the man and the plaque which recognizes his contributions to our city. And I think that the, we need to respect the fact that staff and council has been looking at this thing for a couple of years or 18 months, whatever it is, and that the study that you have created and that you've completed during that time should be honored, just because you've spent a lot of time and talked to a lot of people in terms of whether or not we should change the name, or we should make it the Central Coast Zoo, or whatever it is. The reasons for that, as Mrs. Banish alluded to, are very important. And I think that we have to respect what staff and council has given us to do. And I think it's, I think the tribute to Charles Paddock is there in fine fashion. If you've not seen it yet, go see that statue, go see that plaque, and enjoy the zoo as I have with my family and my daughter, who's now 26, but spent 20 years of her life in the zoo, at least once a month, loved the zoo. So thank you very much for all that you do and for what you've all done for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clicker. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Angela Sisneros, and I am the incoming president for the Friends of the Charles Paddock Board. And I'm super excited about the change. For us Tascaderians, I've lived here my whole life. I grew up going to the zoo. So I definitely get the nostalgia of the name and all of that. But for us, us Tascaderians, we feel a sense of ownership and loyalty to the zoo. And with the growth of a Tascadero happening in the last 15 years, doing amazing things, I think it's, now it's time to bring that loyalty and ownership to our whole county. We want everybody from Napa to San Miguel to say, that is our zoo, instead of, what? Tascadero has a what? So I'm super excited about that. I support the new zoo name because getting the residents of our entire county behind the zoo means more monetary donations, more volunteers, and more possibility in order to keep the quality of animal care and AZA requirements for the next 70 years. So I get the nostalgia, but changing the name is actually empowering our zoo to move forward. So thank you. Thank you, Terry, for all your hard work.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Annette, and I was born and raised in this town. And I remember seeing Charles Paddock with his lion way back in the 60s. And I was born and raised, we would always go to the zoo. And so first of all, I'd like to thank you for keeping the plaza with his name. I understand from listening and observing all of the things you guys had said regarding changing the name. And I can, I can understand more now, and I appreciate it. A couple of years ago, some family members from out of town wanted to go to the zoo. And so we went. And forgive me if I'm being a bit trivial here, but it was pretty costly for all of us to go. And I have five grandchildren, and I'd love to take them, but it's a bit daunting to be able to take all of them in the vehicles, head down there and do it on a regular basis. I think if there was some sort of, and forgive me if I'm being trivial about this, but as a, as a Tascadero resident, long-term, I would love to be able to take my grandchildren and their folks and everybody else to the zoo, and almost be honored that as a Tascadero resident, I am supporting the zoo. But it's kind of, the cost is a bit daunting to me and my family to do on a regular basis. And like I said, I think it was about three years ago, and I, I don't see going back at the rates that it is just as a local. And I would like my grandchildren to see, oh, yeah, I remember that animal, and this one, oh, it's getting bigger now, and oh, we have a new one. I'd like them to have the normalcy of being able to go to the zoo without the cost. So I'm wondering if there's some sort of a discount-type situation for Tascadero residents or North County residents, or something along those lines. And if we had, we could prove that we are a resident. I live several blocks away from it. And it just makes me sad that when we go to the park, it's just a bit too financially daunting to take all those people to go. And so I'd like you guys to consider, or whoever it is that can consider, looking into some sort of a discount program for those of us that are local. Thank you so much for all your hard work. Appreciate you.
Thank you for your comments. And before we go to the next speaker, we normally wait to the end of the community forum to address any questions. But I'm sure that somebody with the Friends could tell her about discounts to come with membership in the Friends of the Zoo. So when the next Friends speaker gets up, maybe I want to address that or sit down with her and talk about the discounts to come with being a member of the Friends. All right, next speaker, please.
Good evening, Council. Jeff Oslin, longtime business owner and resident. It's 1981, actually. And as we all know, I don't sugarcoat anything. So let's get right to the points on things. We bought a zoo. Simple as that. We have to maintain a zoo, or we have to get rid of it. Now, I'm going to go back about six years ago, I believe, maybe seven years, with our city manager, former city manager, Ms. Rickard, standing behind me. But I remember calling out things in the budget, just like I did two weeks ago at council. And I believe at the time, our zoo was running about a $400 or $450 deficit. And I think that was in 2019, if I'm not mistaken. We're now running a deficit of about $800,000 a year, and it's climbing. The food costs are astronomical to feed our animals here at the zoo. So I think the decision that has to come is, we either have a zoo, or we don't have a zoo. I don't care about AZA telling us that we have to rename things. That's like the state telling us, in my opinion. But we do need to be accredited because it does bring a lot of value to our city and our zoo. With that being said, fundraising is a huge factor. I don't know if Central Coast Zoo is the best name, but I don't have a better one. Nothing against Mr. Paddock, but people don't know who he is. I didn't know that in 1981, 1982, et cetera, when I was here. I think that if we're going to have a zoo, we need to figure out how we can sustain it financially and continue on and not have the city burdened by it. Because I'd rather have more facilities for our aging population and the few of our younger population in recreation programs for the mix. And if we have to keep funding this, we're taking away from a lot of things. No different than being instrumental in pushing two tax measures through, which I do wear on my sleeve, and being on oversight committees in the past, and keeping an eye on where funds go. We can't sustain the budget for the zoo and have our emergency services and our infrastructure continue. So anything we can do to have things at our zoo that are presented by, and it's a big name, fine, at a display of a zoo, or if the spider monkeys are sponsored or something like that, it helps a lot. We don't have an endowment to keep the zoo open. So I think we do need to change the name. Thank you.
Excellent timing, Mr. Olsen. Right down to one second left. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I'm Rochelle Rickard, longtime city resident, 36 years, huge Tascadero cheerleader and giant zoo supporter. I am also now on the Friends of the Zoo Board since I retired from the city, and am president for about another week and a half, then Angela will take over. Although I've been a long time a Tascadero resident, I did not know Charles Paddock. I will tell you that I am eternally grateful to him because without him, we would not have a zoo. have a zoo. And I think our zoo is an incredible asset to this community and not just Atascadero, but all of the visitors, the children, the adults, the wonder that you see as people do it. I understand the nostalgia. I took my kids to the Charles Paddock Zoo. I understand the wanting to hold on to that feeling. But I think a man that took and wounded animals would say that it was much more important to make sure that we continue to have a zoo, to we continue to care for those animals, that we continue to do the work that we're doing there as opposed to keeping his name on it. Any steps that we can take to continue to work towards financial sustainability, being able to make sure that we always have that zoo and that that zoo can support itself, I think it's incumbent upon all of us to take those steps, even when they're hard, like losing the name Charles Paddock. I'm going to trust Terry, her team of marketers, the research they did, that Central Coast Zoo is going to be better for optimization, for getting people into the zoo, for sponsorships and all of those things. These people are professionals, they know a lot more. And any steps that we can do to start closing that gap, getting more people aware, getting more people in the zoo, I think we need to take those no matter how hard they are. So I am very much in support of changing it to Central Coast Zoo. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Dr. Steve Robinson. It's been my pleasure and my honor to be the veterinarian in charge of the animals at the Charles Paddock Zoo for the last thirty-three years. I've also been a member of the Board of Directors of the nonprofit that helps support that zoo since its inception. And I want to say upfront that I am totally in favor of changing the name. I think the thing about people who don't care for animals don't get is how people who do care for animals think. For us, it's not about us, it's about the animals. And the best way to honor someone, if that's what the city council chooses to do, is to honor the animals. And I think that changing the name gives this zoo the best chance it has to support itself. Because if the zoo fails, that is not very honorable to Mr. Paddock. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. And thank you very much for all of the veterinary services you have provided over the years to the zoo. We really appreciate it.
Mayor, members of council, my name is Roger Snovel. I live at one, two, three, seven, five, plenty road in Atascadero. I've been here for two and a half years, but I got here as quick as I could. And before that, I was involved in an awful lot of other zoos in various different capacities and been through the accreditation process several times. I am a member of AZA, not as a professional, but as a citizen. When I first got here, I was invited to come on to the board, to Friends of the Paddock, Charles Paddock Zoo. And so, I'm a zoo person. I left the living desert. I was very much involved with that. I was involved with Los Angeles, San Diego. But I came here and met with Jim Lewis, who knew me from my days in L.A. And we started to talk about all different things and the zoo came up. And we talked about the zoo, I had been to see it, my wife and I went to see it. And I said, there's no way it's going to get accredited. I know enough about accreditation that there are weeds, there are rotten timbers, there are fences in the wrong place, there are not fences where they're supposed to be. And I'm not that technical, but I knew there was a bit of problems. And he said, well, we're going to get it accredited. And so, we went to work and said, okay, but that's the start. We get it accredited, but then we have to come up with a way to sustain it because cities have a hard time with their zoos. And there are a lot of cities still that own zoos. Some of them give the operation over to another organization, but they still own the land and provide a lot of the services to it. Even San Diego Zoo is still owned by the City of San Diego and they provide all the services to it. Anyhow, we then talked about what it's, after accreditation, what has to happen. And I said, we have to figure out a way to create more earned revenue from the zoo and take pressure off of the city. And that means raising money so we can make better exhibits, so we can get more people in, have more events, so we can raise more money and bring up our earned revenue, so it's much more sustainable. And that's what we have to do. And one of the first parts of that is to do the new branding. The Central Coast Zoo gives us an opportunity to do new branding. And the thing I really like about it is we still have the presentation of Charles Paddock Zoo. The first thing you see when you come into the zoo is Charles Paddock. So there's a tribute to him. He founded the thing. You should have a lot of credit. A lot of zoos don't recognize their starting members and I think that's a shame, but we can do that. So we get more people in, they see Charles Paddock and I see nothing but a bright future, but it's going to take a lot of hard work.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Randy Kenny. My granddaughter was a fourth-generation Atascadero high school graduate, so I've been here a while. I basically have questions. I've, it was looking at Terry's presentation, whoever was in charge of it did a lot of work. That just didn't happen overnight. What I'm more so mad at is, I'd almost like you to poll this audience, I'm sure you won't, but I don't know anybody that I've talked to that ever heard where this public, or public was notified that there was going to be a name change. I haven't talked to one soul and I know a lot of people. So that's question number one, where was it published? And supposedly, I thought we had proof of signatures. Is that, is that true or is that, did I mishear something? Proof of signatures that approved this thing? Oh, that, wait a minute, you can't answer that. I'm sure you'll have to answer it afterwards. Okay, so proof of signatures. And like I just said, I'd like to poll the people here, see if they knew anything about it. And this gentleman spoke about the financial end. I mean, let's be real, how long can Atascadero support a negative million and a half dollars every year? I don't, I don't, I don't know how we can go on because that million and a half dollars has to affect other programs in the town that maybe could be there, out of there, or whatever. But anyhow, there's my questions, so I'll wait for your answers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We already heard from you. Did you have?
Twenty-four seconds left.
Okay, all right. I'll let you proceed for twenty-four. Set the clock to twenty-four seconds.
Very brief question. A lot of us who own animals and have too many roosters and rabbits and sheep and chickens and all this, we would take it to Zoo to You. And that would save them a tremendous amount of money. What are the thoughts on those of us that do have these excess animals, bringing them to the zoo so that those can be utilized and feed to the animals?
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Linda Mello and I'm a longtime Atascadero resident. I'm like fifth generation, whatever. And I knew Charles Paddock and watched him lovingly build the zoo. And it's about history to me, you know, and I hate seeing us continuously erase our history in Atascadero. Happened, they said something about the town founder? No, there isn't much left for him. They burned his house to the ground. And I feel like this is another slap in the face of history. We should have included his name. He was the zoo. We wouldn't have a zoo without him. And I think that there are a lot of people that feel just like me. And you may find less funds from the locals because of this decision. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Seeing no one else approach, we will close public comment. And to address the second to last speaker, I want to remind you that the zoo costs a million and a half, but it takes in seven hundred and fifty thousand. So, the operating deficit or subsidy, if you will, is seven hundred and fifty and as noted by another speaker, you know, was four hundred thousand a few years back, some years back. So it obviously is an issue, but it's not a million and a half a year to be, to clarify that for you. Ms. Banish, if you could address again, I think you did discuss it briefly, but you know, in terms of the outreach efforts that you did and certainly the consultation with the Friends of the Zoo, who are the most active people in our community in supporting the zoo financially and fundraising and volunteering. But in addition to them, who you reached out to, I don't think there were signatures or anything in favor, but you did poll a number of people. Can you reiterate that?
Absolutely, I can. So when we did our survey, we did it at the Central Coast Craft Beer Festival and we literally like surveyed people, whether they were local people, out of the area people, young people, older folks. We got a very good sampling of two hundred and eighty-one people when we were casting the name and having them look at the logos and select the logos. So at that event, it was done purposefully because we want an unbiased sampling of people so you can get a really good understanding as to where we're at. Are we headed in the wrong direction or are we headed in the right direction? Central Coast Zoo and Atascadero Zoo were the top two, but Central Coast Zoo was thirty percent higher in the vote of that. And Charles Paddock came up here and there and we had Slow Cal Zoo, which was a no-go at all, maybe two votes on that. And that was what we had done as far as that goes. We also, we've had discussions about the rebranding in a number of our meetings. We had in April twenty-fifth of twenty-three, we had our draft action plan and we talked about rebranding and renaming of the zoo to the Central Coast Charles Paddock Zoo. We also had June thirteenth of twenty-twenty-three, the draft budget and draft action plan that included rebranding and naming of the zoo again in that. And then June, or excuse me, January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, we had council goals, action plans, update, renaming was noted in that action plan update that we did on page forty. So we have a list of a number of different places where we talked about the rebranding, the renaming, a new name, a new logo, specifically taking my talking points from tonight, from February twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-five, it was specifically noted when we talked marketing and we talked rebranding and what we wanted to do to try and cast a larger net. And then through our ad agency, Tom Jones Ad Agency and working with John Sorgenfry, very knowledgeable with digital and all the different things that you need to do to really position yourself properly with a new name. And Central Coast Zoo was the name we stuck with on that. There is a Central Coast Aquarium in Avalat, there is a Central Coast Zoo in Australia. So we know that. And so, our Central Coast Zoo, when you see it in social media, will have Central Coast Zoo CA for California. And then like I mentioned prior, Atascadero is a major part of this, it's Atascadero, California. There's a lot of words on that brand and it definitely gives it a place and it looks very nice along with that logo. So those are the things, as far as more meetings that we had, from April twentieth of twenty-twenty-four, a special meeting, we mentioned the renaming. May twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-four, item A thirteen, funding for accreditation. We also talked about branding, a new name and logo as an expense. And then February eleventh, item C three, we had it in our action plan, pages one seventy-nine and one ninety-two of the agenda packet. And then, of course, what I just mentioned, February twenty-first and February twenty-second twenty-twenty-five, the special meetings that we had with that. And then February twenty-fifth twenty-twenty-five and April twenty-second twenty-twenty-five. So we've done quite a bit with being out there and folks have every opportunity to be a part of that. So that is, you know, a lot of what we had done with our outreach and covering all our bases. It never fails, though, you know, you can miss folks and that is unfortunate. At the same time, with Charles Paddock, it's a very important part of our history. We have a respect for our history. We're definitely going to be incorporating like we have talked about on the website as well as at the front in the Charles Paddock Plaza. And it's, he's the reason why we have a zoo and it's so important to keep that part of all of this. I believe I answered everything. I know as far as the dollars to, that it costs to go into the zoo, we are going to have a resident rate at thirteen dollars that we're folding flat for the residents. We'll also have a group rate when people have a group of people coming in that will give them a break. I don't have that pricing right in front of me, but we definitely are making sure that we stay affordable. And I believe that's all of the questions.
Yes, thank you. And I'm not going to ask you to come up with a podium, but I could make sure that the Friends of the Zoo, if you could discuss the one?
Yes, membership.
The membership and the discounts with memberships.
That's a great deal, by the way.
Want to visit more frequently, definitely works out to be a good deal. Okay, thank you. And I would acknowledge certainly that no matter how much outreach you do, you're certainly not going to reach out to everybody. And, you know, there are going to be people that missed and the council itself was well-informed of the progress of this, you know, of this decision-making. And if, and if there's any failure in that regard, that's on us, not you. And so, anyway, I'm going to bring it back to council. This is, you know, this is really an information item and an opportunity for the public to speak and for us to comment. So there's no direct or specific action required unless council wanted to provide some additional direction or guidance to staff. So I will bring it back to the council for any discussion or comments that you wish to make. And I'll start on my right with Councilmember Newsom. If, you don't have to make comments, but if you want.
I know, you get me every time I have a cough drop on. Anyways, I just want to say thank you to the staff that put on all the time and the energy. It's always been a passion of mine, the zoo. I don't ever want to see it close. It means so much to our community. It is part of our children's future and our grandchildren are attending there now. And so, I do want to mention the number one thing that we get asked when we travel to our conferences is what makes your city unique? And I always say, we have a zoo, come and see it. So thank you, I get to continue to say that.
Councilmember Funk?
Yeah, I wanted to add one thought to what Director Banish talked about, the various outreach. And the three of us that were on the council in twenty-twenty, I'm sure we'll all recall that we reached out and did a survey of the community. This was a large statistical survey where we were in part asking about the, what became Measure D twenty, if that is doing such a spectacular job of funding our public safety and infrastructure and excellence in services. And one of the questions in that survey was about whether or not people wanted to continue to have the zoo open if it had required continual operational subsidies. And what we heard from our community was a resounding yes. So we're in a situation with the zoo where kind of as Mr. Osland alluded, we have to, you know, go big or go home. We need to be accredited to have the caliber of zoo that can attract the people, the animals that make for a good experience nowadays. It was different in Charles Paddock's time. It was, that was a much more casual and entrepreneurial time. And we are building on a legacy of his love of animals and his amazing creativity and getting some interesting animals. We continue to rescue animals, including I believe the macaws came from a home environment where they didn't have a space to fly and now they have a lovely enclosure. So if you haven't seen our beautiful heist of macaws, they're one of the rescues that we've had. And in a way to continue to build on the character and the good parts of what Mr. Paddock brought to the zoo and has created so many experiences. So I really appreciate the hard work that's gone into understanding this and the care that and passion of the community in really caring about and supporting our zoo and wanting that experience to be available for your grandchildren and your great-grandchildren and everybody else's, you know, that's valuable. I do want to say just one other thing, and that's I've been really moved by some of the stories that have come up. Some of the stories that are very positive and funny and, you know, people have experiences with Mr. Paddock. And I would, you know, oral history is not really the responsibility of the city and the operations of the zoo, but that's why we have a historical society or we, or other groups who might step up and collect some of those stories so that we have a richer understanding of what it was like to sit there with a tiger cub in your lap, as Mr. Nelson has described. A lot of this is going on in online posts that isn't being gathered anywhere. So I would just encourage those of you who are passionate about that legacy and that aspect of sharing those stories to do so, to work with others, to find a way to aspect of sharing those stories, to do so, to work with others, to find a way to keep that oral history while there are folks that remember those early years of the zoo so that we have the richness there to continue to share with future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Portemderis.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Director Banish and her team and staff and everybody involved in the efforts that led up to this decision. And then, of course, the subsequent effort to explain your efforts and where we're at. So as was noted earlier by somebody in the audience, this did not happen overnight. This was not a knee-jerk decision to change the name. A lot of thought went into it. There was a lot of intricate reasons why this needed to happen. It was very well thought out, and I think was very well explained tonight. I appreciate all of that. So I think, you know, we all want the best for the zoo, for our city, and for, you know, the legacy that we have of the zoo. And again, I appreciate all the work that everybody put into it, and let's keep a positive attitude towards this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pete, any comments?
Yeah, just a couple. You know, I've lived here fifteen years, and I'm kind of like a nerd when it comes to locale and history and everything. And I knew who Charles Paddock was since I first went to the zoo fifteen years ago. I also was surprised when I became a city councilperson that we owned the zoo. And I thought it was bad business to own a zoo, just based on looking at the budget. I grew up going to the San Diego Zoo. We have the Wegaforth Bowl there. That's the Wegaforth, the guy that started the San Diego Zoo nineteen-seventeen. And that's still down there. Totally not the same thing. I'm not trying to put two and two together. But what I do know is that, you know, operating anything at a deficit for a long period of time is not a thing I'm really into. I would, I'd love to look forward to seeing the zoo being profitable and being run by a nonprofit and leasing the land from the city. That'd be amazing. I think it would be good for the city, good for the zoo itself, good for the animals. The zoo renaming and rebranding wasn't per se a secret, although I've only been elected since December, and I didn't pay much attention to anything like that. And I generally paid attention mostly to the infrastructure and public safety. Since it was a topic, when people asked me what's going on, I did have conversations, well, we're rebranding the zoo to people. But, you know, I apologize if people felt like they were, like this came out of nowhere. I talk to people individually. I can't speak on behalf of the council. That'd be violation of law. But I apologize if my naivety to what, how important this was to a lot of people came across that way, because I didn't, maybe even though I knew who he was and I knew the importance of the zoo, being that I knew a lot of behind-the-scenes things that was going on, maybe I didn't feel like it was that big of a deal that a lot of people clearly do. And so, I apologize that people don't feel fully communicated within the city. But I do want this thing to be sustainable because I do not think the city should be paying for a zoo to be run. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I would just add that, like Mayor Portemderis said, we all want the zoo to be successful. And the council has put up some additional money in that regard, which I think was very important in terms of achieving accreditation. And accreditation is just critically important. Councilmember Funk mentioned, we still rescue animals well. The cute little spider monkeys we have were confiscated, and I don't know, it was a drug bust or whatever it was, but they were confiscated, I think, in Oakland. And they, you know, because we're an accredited zoo, they could be placed in our zoo. And we wouldn't have a red panda exhibit if we didn't, if we weren't an accredited zoo. We would, as noted by Director Banish, we would essentially very quickly become a roadside attraction, and we wouldn't have a zoo. And I think for anybody who really supports the zoo and, you know, to keep alive what Mr. Paddock started is the most important thing. And this has been a very necessary step along those lines. And I can say that as a longtime supporter of the zoo, my wife and I were on the Board of Directors of the Friends of the Zoo, different organization because it went belly-up at some point, but different Friends of the Zoo organization back in the late eighties. And so, a long-time history with the zoo. And we, like I said, we all want to do what's best for the zoo, and we are certainly, I think, up there convinced that this is the best for the zoo. And if anybody feels, you know, left out of the decision-making process, they can, you know, they can fault us for that. And so with that, I think there's no action on our part, so we will go ahead and close this item and move on to our next item, which is council announcements and committee reports. And I will start going back the other direction with Councilmember Pete. And thank you all for coming and speaking on this item. It's actually good to see a local item, very nonpartisan in nature, generate public involvement and concern. So, thank you. Councilmember Pete?
No committee reports. Haven't had any committees since our last meeting. Looking forward to the ribbon-cutting next Friday and looking forward to seeing everybody there.
Mayor Portemderis?
Thank you. Air Pollution Control District met last week, but I was not able to make it as I have been selected for a jury trial. So it's going to last about six weeks, so I'm trying to squeeze everything in that I can. I was there today all day and barely made it here. Tomorrow, CapFlo meets via Zoom, so I will be able to make that, probably barely, starts at five. This Friday, as was mentioned, the ribbon-cutting is at five, and hopefully I can make it back into town in time for that. I'm really looking forward to that block party. I think we have something going on downstairs at four o'clock with some people for us for that particular reason, but hopefully I'll be able to make it here at least at five o'clock. Thank you.
Well, I know you didn't volunteer, but thank you for serving on a jury, especially one that's five to six weeks long. That's good, further public service for you. Councilmember Funk?
Yeah, HSOC Executive Committee met last week. And the one thing of note is that we implemented an element of the new process for allocating funds on grants to give guidance to a grant review committee that for the general services elements of the bigger state, HAP four and HAP five money, it's called, they're there, this homeless housing and accountability program. I forget, I forget what it stands for, but it's HHAP, the big state money, that the shelter and other services are going to be allocated such that forty percent of the funds are committed, need to be sure to be committed on a regional basis, so ten percent each in the northern, central, and southern parts of the state, ten percent county and ten percent countywide. And the other sixty percent will be performance-based. But all entities applying have to meet a certain hurdle rate of performance. This ensures that we don't end up with zero funding any one of our major organizations in major shelters and services in any area of the county just because somebody else is a little bit better on something. We need services in all areas.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Newsom?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. I will, last Friday, I attended the county or the mayor's meeting in Paso Robles, out at the airport, at which time a plane crashed, actually. A small plane forgot to put the landing gear down. And so that was, I didn't see it, but Mayor Hammond saw it and made note of it, and the fire chief made note of it. But the fire chief of Paso was there, and he's been leading an effort regarding something that you all, the rest of you councilmembers, may be briefed on in a series of two meetings regarding, and I think City Manager Lewis has probably broached the subject with you regarding a change in the way ambulance service is provided in the county. So that's something you may hear more about or may get an invitation to a briefing in the next month. The IWA did not meet since, well, actually, we dropped the budget with the lower rate, but more importantly, we ratified the selection of our new executive director, and he will, his name is Kobe Sky, and he will be starting on July seventh, although he's coming to town this Friday, and I will be meeting with him for a couple of hours. So we're very excited about that, so that Mr. Cron can finally retire and go off into the sunset to a well-deserved rest. And I attended the Central Coast Community Energy Board meeting. And I would just note that I express concern regarding the cost of programs that they run because each of those programs is, in my mind, essentially a reverse Robin Hood situation where they're taking money from all ratepayers and giving it to a, you know, small, select number of individuals or jurisdictions for specific programs, some of which we may be very worthwhile, but nonetheless, you know, require the taking of money from all ratepayers and giving it to a smaller number. So anyway, that was that, and that's all I have for committee reports. Does any member of the council have an individual determination or action they would like to mention? No? Okay, with that, I will also note to the public, though, that we normally have only one meeting in July. It is normally our, the first meeting, which is usually the second Tuesday of the month, but we have rescheduled that. We did so early on in January when we adopted the meeting calendar for the year. But for anybody who's expecting there to be a meeting here July eighth, there will not be. Our July meeting will be July twenty-second for anybody wanting to make sure they don't miss the next council meeting or not show up to an empty chamber. There will not be a council meeting in July eighth. There will be one on July twenty-second. So with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all again for coming and your comments.